Welcome to April 13th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Calveras County Board of Supervisors. We will be reading out closed session items. Madam Clerk?
Closed session item from the March 30th, 2021 meeting. Item one, Public Employment pursuant to Government Code 54957B1, Health and Human Services Agency Director, no reportable action. Item two, Public Employment pursuant to Government Code 54957B1, Public Works Director, board action, board voted five to zero to direct staff to bring back a resolution appointing Robert Packenger to the position of Director of Public Works and Transportation at the next board meeting, which is April 13th. Motion by Supervisor Callaway and seconded by Supervisor Garimendi.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we have the item for today, closed session agenda?
Closed session item for today, April 13th, 2021. Item one, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2.
Thank you. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll move into closed session now. Thank you. Welcome, welcome back to the April 13th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Calveras County Board of Supervisors. At this time, will everyone stand for the pledge? Will you lead, Mr. Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make an announcement that Ms. O'Connell will be here today from Washington DC per Zoom and we'll be working with her schedule, so items 26 and 27 of the regular agenda will be moved forward at the time that she's available, which will be out of our normal order, but it's a scheduling issue that we'll be dealing with with Ms. O'Connell. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you report out the closed session item?
Closed session item for today, April 13th, 2021. Conference with Legal Counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to give the opportunity for any staff announcements.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, respected members of the board and deputy clerk of the board, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Today, I would like to announce another successful collaborative free rabies and microchip clinic that took place on April 3rd. The clinic was organized and facilitated by our partners with Friends at Calaveras Animal Services Focus, our animal services staff, Dr. Jenny Rengat, and of course, we can't forget Patrick Martin and his crew with our buildings and grounds. Cars started lining up at 8:30 and we did not stop until a little bit after 12, almost 12:30. We vaccinated over 107 furry ones with an additional 66 microchips that were injected. Our next clinic is a first here at the government center. Again, a huge thank you to our community for making sure our Calaveras animals are safe and protected. Our community donated over $500 that day. We hope to see you soon at our next free clinic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further staff announcements?
None at this time.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the public health update. Item two, Public Health Services, receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli, members of the board and residents of Calveras County. Thanks for the opportunity to present again. I am Sam Leach, your Inner Arm Health and Human Services Director. I will give you the data for this week. As of this morning, there have been 38,064 tests completed. 2,041 of those tests have been positive for COVID. We have 14 active cases. We've had 1,976 recover. We have one active hospitalization. We have had 51 fatalities to date. And last week, we received 2,470 doses of the vaccine. And so far, we have administered 25,837 doses into the arms of Calveras residents. With that, we are running clinics at our Frogtown site regularly on Tuesdays and Thursdays for now. We've occasionally done another day as demand has increased, but we are also trying to use Wednesdays to do travel clinics. We've got one tomorrow in McCollumie Hill. So if anybody is out in that area and looking for a place to get vaccinated, all of our clinics are available on MyTurn. So you're going to go to the MyTurn website to register, or, and that's myturn.ca.gov. Once again, that's myturn.ca.gov. If you do not have internet access and you want a call-in number, that 800 toll-free number is 833-422-4255. Once again, that's 833-422-4255. So that would be the 800 number to call in if you're looking for a place to get vaccinated. And all of our public health clinics are listed on there. I know Mark Twain Medical Center has gotten on MyTurn. A lot less confusing nowadays. If you're looking for a place to get a vaccine, MyTurn is your spot. Effective immediately, I know we've opened up our clinics. Everyone 16 and older is eligible for a vaccine. Keep in mind that if you're under 18, if you're 16 or 17 years right now and you're looking for a vaccine, the only one that's up for use is the Pfizer vaccine. Let's see, testing. We have free COVID testing today, if you're looking for a place to get tested. Free testing today at Ironstone from 10:00 to 6:00. And then there's also testing this Friday at the West Point Community Hall from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM. So once again, it's testing today at Ironstone from 10:00 to 6:00. And testing at the West Point Community Hall this Friday, 10:00 to 12:30. As far as the blueprint for a safer economy, which is where our tier system comes from the state, we remain in the red tier. We did see some improvement in our stats this past week. So if we have another week where the stats continue to trend in our favor, we could, we could move into the orange tier, which is less restrictive as soon as next week. So I'll be back for a public health update on the 20th and we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope that things continue to trend in our favor and we can have some, some good news to keep heading in the right direction. But obviously, nothing's a given and we've been pretty close, kind of teetering in between the red and the orange. So we'll see how that goes. That's about it. I'm going to keep it pretty short today and pass it over to Doug Archer, our partner from Mark Twain Medical Center, to see what updates you have there.
Thanks, Sam. I don't have too much else to offer. Hospital is busy, but we don't currently have any COVID patients in-house. So the one hospitalization you mentioned must be at a hospital out of our county. Our census today is 12, all on Medsberg. So we've got plenty of ICU beds available. Things are, things are looking pretty good, but we are busy. ER notably has seen an increase in visits over the past week or so. Not COVID related, but just an interesting tidbit. We started our vaccine, our Saturday vaccine clinics on this last Saturday, the 10th. We'll be going again this coming Saturday, the 17th, and we have seven, 700 slots available. I didn't get a chance to check in with the clinic director this morning to see where we were at in terms of how many have been booked, but we've got a capacity for 700 this Saturday. So, and we're hoping to continue that until we reach a good vaccination percentage for the county. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Any board questions or comments? Ms. Callaway?
Mr. Archer, will Mark Twain be doing the same as the county, i.e. 16 and above, open to all?
Yeah, yeah, we, well, age depends on vaccine. 16 for Pfizer, 18 for Moderna, but we, we take direction from county health on what the criteria is. So we just follow their lead.
So if somebody's 22, they sign up at MyTurn?
Yep.
They, do they get a Pfizer, do they get a choice, or is it whatever you have?
It's, it's the same process. When they go into MyTurn, they select their appointment and I'll let them know if it's Moderna or Pfizer to make their second appointment.
Okay.
But we're all, we're all, it's basically the exact same process, it's just the location may be different. You might, you know, if you're coming on Saturday, the 17th, you'll be at our clinic. If you're Tuesday or Thursday, you'll be out at Frogtown.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms., I have, I'm sorry.
My apologies, Ms. Callaway.
Mr. Leach? Yo, Sam. I like that Miami Vice look. Considering we're not going to be getting any more J&amp;J because they've stopped doing it, and if people want it, can they get it? I'm not real clear on the direction we're hearing on national news and how that falls down into the state and the county. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, well, right now, paused, right? So J&amp;J administration has been paused while they research, from what I understand, is six cases out of over 6 million where blood clots developed. So I won't pretend to play doctor or research scientist here, other than to just wait for direction. I know they say they're doing it out of an abundance of caution, in which they're, you know, that's a pretty normal part of the process with vaccines. You know, they see something, they'll hold it up for a little bit, do some quick analysis and probably get it back. So I wouldn't say that we're not getting more J&amp;J because we don't really know that moving forward. I would say right now, we're paused like everybody else. Like we don't have any immediate plans to administer what little, frankly, what little Johnson &amp; Johnson that we have. To give you some perspective, I'm going off the top of my head, I don't have it written down, but I'm pretty confident we've gotten less than 1,000 total Johnson &amp; Johnson doses to date, which, you know, compare that with 30,000 plus between Pfizer and Moderna. So the overwhelming majority of what we've been doing has been Pfizer and Moderna. I know Mark Twain has done a lot of Moderna. They've been pretty heavy on the Moderna, it stores differently. We've probably been slightly heavier on Pfizer, but we do a lot of both Pfizer and Moderna at our clinics. We really haven't gotten very much Johnson &amp; Johnson. Other jurisdictions have gotten more. So we'll see what happens with that. But I'm sure that probably seven days from now, even, there will be another update on the J&amp;J since the story just broke.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Morning, Sam.
Good morning.
All the numbers that you read off, those are all state numbers, what we received from the state, none from what we have our records. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have, do we have our own records? Do we keep?
No, because we're not, we're not responsible for, I mean, we, we don't have any way to track, like what CVS has done. You know, the other pharmacies, medical providers, even with Mark Twain, we wouldn't have any way to track what they have, other than just what they tell us.
Well, but I'm just talking about the county itself, what we get, what we have given. Do we have any of those numbers specifically, just what the county has done, not, not CVS?
I don't, I don't have them available this morning. No.
The other question I have is, it says 25,503. We have no way of telling exactly where we are on first and second doses, if it is a first and second dose. So we just have a total number, how many shots have gone in an arm, not complete as far as they're completely inoculated.
We do have a way of, we do have a way of checking for that, but that's something that has to be pulled. If you want me to pull those numbers or?
Oh, you can, just maybe next week when you give your update, if you could do that. And then I would also like to know next week, from the very beginning, since we started receiving vaccines, the total number we've received overall, from the past to the current, how many vaccine doses have we received as a county? I'm not talking CVS or, or Mark Twain, I'm just the county itself, through the Health Department.
Okay.
All right.
That should be, the total received by county public health should be something we can get? If not, I'll provide you an explanation, but that sounds like something we can get. And then you want the percentage of people basically who are fully vaccinated?
Correct.
In Calveras County?
Correct.
And then also the percentage of how many have gotten at least one dose?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Toffenelli, to be clear, you want raw numbers? Or do you want that as a percentage of what we project?
I would like, I would like raw numbers, if that's.
Raw numbers?
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any further board questions? With that, we'll move to public comment.
We have Tabitha Davis. Tabitha? Tabitha, can you hear us?
We can't hear you. No.
Can you hear me now? All right.
We're going to have issues on feedback because you're next to the TV out there. One moment, Tabitha, we'll, we'll remedy this echo that we have going on. And then we'll turn the TV back on for you out in the foyer after you're done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Tabitha?
Yes.
No, but, oh, there should be a remote. Just one second, Tabitha, again, I apologize. It looks like she's heading outside now.
Hello?
You know what, that's phenomenal now. Sorry for making you go on a walk. Go ahead and, once you're comfortable where you're at, go ahead and start. You're good, you're good to go, Tabitha.
Can you hear me?
No, I can't. Hello?
Tabitha, we can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you, Tabitha.
Okay, I can't hear them.
Go ahead and make your comment. Okay, she's waiting for general public comment.
Oh, general public.
Is there any other people on here for public health comment?
Not at this time.
Okay. No, I need to gather myself. We'll move on to recognitions. Okay, Mr. Archer and Mr. Leach, thank you for your time today and we appreciate the update. With that, we'll move on to recognitions and acknowledgements. Mr. Garimendi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're here today to adopt a proclamation recognized in the week of April 12th to 17th as National Library Week and April 17th is National Bookmobile Day in Calveras County. And welcome our librarian to our meeting.
Oh, Nancy. So, Mr. Chair, whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities, and whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive spaces, places that foster a sense of belonging in community, offering free resources to all. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, including delivering services through bookmobiles, serving as mobile branch libraries. Whereas for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and robust Wi-Fi 24/7, inside and outside. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of, of access for all. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Whereas to adopt, adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Garimendi. Ms. Nancy Ginn.
Morning, boy. So happy to see you in person, sort of.
Take it off for a second.
Take it off. The theme for National Library Week this year is "Welcome to Your Library." And it's been our privilege to welcome many to our libraries in Calveras County this year, despite the challenges of COVID-19. Although all of our sites were closed by county mandate on March 16th, we developed safe protocols and acquired all the necessary PPE to keep our staff and patrons safe for curbside delivery of all items. Public Health approved our service plan and we began curbside service on March 30th. In the months that we were closed, we delivered 17,934 library odd items to our patrons from our library doors, front doors, back doors, side doors throughout the county. We offered new digital resources, which were heavily used by parents, children, and adults who were struggling with adjusting to challenging new restrictions. During the summer, we delivered 2,166 reading packets to over 380 children. Each packet contained a free book and fun activities to help parents bridge the learning gaps that their children suffered during the 2020 school year. We also delivered 2,100, pardon me, 619 grab-and-go lunches to children who suffered, who were suffering economically during June and July. These services welcomed new patrons who needed our help. In addition to the children we served in San Andreas, we served 42 children in West Point with lunches and summer reading materials. This was the first year that we've had that many children participate in West Point, at least during my tenure as county librarian. I believe that even during the pandemic, our community felt very welcome at the Calveras County Library. Our annual report to the state library reflects this well. During this year, we increased our registered library users by over 2,500. We now have 26,600 registered users in Calveras County, 5,700 of whom are children. Despite our being closed and reduced, having reduced public service hours, we offered nearly 7,000 hours of in-person service to our community and had over 50,000 visitors. We circulated 86,000 items and supplied 48,000 interlibrary loan items, despite the fact that there was no library interloan, library, interlibrary loan for 19 weeks. We've had 25,600 users of our digital resources and 18,000, at least, using our 24/7 Wi-Fi in various locations. Even though we couldn't offer in-person programming to our children for most of the year, we still served 6,500 children in person and over 2,200 with virtual programming prepared by staff and volunteers. Our literacy division delivered weekly learning packets, nearly 800 in all, to the ADC literacy students, helping the jail staff keep their residents busy and engaged in learning. As librarians over the state were struggling to know how to serve people, I was happy to report to them almost from the beginning of the closures that we offered curbside service. In our, we were the first, I think, that I know of. And this was great thanks to our administration, to public health and HR risk for helping us develop our protocols and approving our plans. In our library cooperative, 4999, we were the first library to open our doors again in July. Even now, two of the six in our cooperative are still closed. So we may think we're, we're behind the times, but we're actually doing very, very well. I'm thankful for the service-minded staff who happily agreed to offer services to their community, even when so little was known about the virus. This took courage. When we opened site for public hours at the end of July, some of our volunteers said, "We want to come back too." So we have an amazing staff and volunteers in the Calveras County Library System and I celebrate all of them during National Library Week and invite you to do the same. And this year, during this week, we're also celebrating National Bookmobile Day on Saturday, April 17th. This year, we can celebrate because Calveras County, our bookmobile is coming. We've been hard at work to design it, to put it out to bid, award the bid, and place the order, and our beautiful new vehicle is under construction. We expect delivery in September and look forward to the opportunity to serve our community even better by offering library services to underserved areas in our county. The Friends at the Calveras County Library are launching their fundraising campaign this week to raise matching funds required by the grant we received from the state library. The grant will pay two-thirds of the cost of the vehicle and the Friends are raising the rest and also some added funds to help me stock the, the bookmobile, which will actually be a mobile branch library. will actually be a mobile branch library. Welcome to library, uh, welcome to Library Week this week. Welcome to the library also. Calaveras County Library staff and volunteers are committed to making our community stronger by offering information, programs, books, media, and comfortable space. Everyone is welcome at the library. We hope to see you this week and every week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giddens. The, uh, you've done quite, quite, quite a few things in the community, working with partners through the school districts and everything else to get, get a lot of these, um, things done in the last couple of years. Uh, you know, um, it's much appreciated. The kids have, uh, felt and see the good work you've done. And, you know, from the science kits that went out to the lunch mills and everything else. Any board, board comments? Any public comments?
No public comments at this time.
Mr. Garrett Mindy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make my comment quick. Um, Nancy, thank you, and thanks, thanks for all the people who support the library and the Friends of the Library, um, campaign going on for the bookmobile. There's matching programs there. I, 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 no, I, I think it's great and I hope everybody in the community and the support supports it. Um, you know, our, our libraries, you have never, during this pandemic, you have never said that is not what a library does. You have said this is what the community wants and what the community needs, and I appreciate that. Um, from picking up farmer's market stuff at the Mokil Library to feeding the kids up in West Point, um, thank you. Uh, libraries are not the libraries I grew up in as a kid. They are very dynamic and exciting, so thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I would like to, I, I need a motion and a second, sir.
Would you like to make the motion or would you like someone else to make the motion, sir?
I'll move aside, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. All those in favor?
Aye.
And no one's against? Uh, Mr. Garrett Mindy.
Thank you. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors that April 12th to 17th, 2021 is National Library Week and April 17th, 2021 as National Bookmobile Day in celebration of the mobile branch library coming to Calaveras this year. This week, we encourage you to visit the library, explore what's new, engage with library staff and volunteers, and use our library's print, digital, and online resources and services. Be a part of the transformation of our community by using your library. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That'll be, that's all.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Giddens. We really appreciate all the good work you do, and we look forward to seeing all the great things in the future. Um, right now, I'm gonna go ahead and go to, uh, general public comment. Ms. Clerk, when you're available. Any, uh, I believe we have one person out there ready for general public comment, um, if I need to walk out there. I will.
Yes, Tabitha is ready, ma'am.
Okay.
I can go, won't be there?
Okay, yeah, no, can, Tabitha, um...
I'm promoting her to speaker now.
Okay.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Hi, um, I apologize for the inconvenience earlier. Uh, so this is the general comment section, part of the meeting, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so my name is Tabitha Davis, and I'm going to get straight to the point. Um, I feel that we need more funding for our sheriff's department. We also need our own narcotics division. The needs of our community are not being met with the lack of staffing. With more funding and a narcotics division, our community will feel safer, therefore bridging the lack of disconnect between the citizens of Calaveras County and our sheriff's department. I will collect the signatures for the petition myself. I come before the Board of Supervisors out of respect, not as a politician, but as a concerned citizen, seeing a need that needs to be filled and to ask for you guys to help point me in the right direction before I start the petition for funding to get on a ballot.
Will there be anything further, Ms. Davis?
No, sir, that's it.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Any further comments?
No further public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna call for a ten-minute recess. Thank you. Um, we have a change in our schedule. Item twenty-six will be, uh, moving forward at this time because of scheduling reasons. Uh, Ms. Mc, Ms. O'Connell, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Good to see you. Very good.
Good to see you too.
All right, so, uh, let's move forward with item number twenty-six.
Thank you so much. Um, this is Mia O'Connell, uh, with O'Connell and Dempsey. I represent the county in Washington DC, and, um, it's really good to see everyone today. Um, Krista had asked me to come and give a overview of the action and the opportunity as we see it in Washington and how that could benefit the county, so I thought I would talk about that today. Um, there are a number of, I would say, related but distinct vehicles and, um, avenues that are currently underway right now in Washington. Let me take a, a couple of minutes to kind of break those down a little bit. I would say the first one, um, is the premier one, which is the American Jobs Plan, the President's two trillion-dollar infrastructure package. Um, and, and that's really the President's vision for getting Americans back to work. Um, and it's a wide sweeping proposal, as I think everyone knows, really providing a range of things of, of interest to us. Um, six hundred and twenty-one billion for transportation, infrastructure, that is bridges, roads, transit, ports, airports, electric vehicle development, um, this sort of thing. There's four hundred billion for, uh, care for the elderly and disabled Americans. There's three hundred billion for improving our drinking water infrastructure and expanding broadband and upgrading the electric grid. Um, this is really the second initiative by the administration after the passage of the one-point-nine trillion-dollar, uh, coronavirus relief package. Um, and as a part of this infrastructure package, um, there is a, a focus on creating jobs in rural areas. I want to talk a little bit about that today. Um, there's ten billion dollars in water infrastructure loans and grants. There's twenty billion for transportation, really focusing on fixing rural bridges. There's funding for forest restoration USDA, resilient forest projects, fening prescribed fires, reforestation, things of that nature. There's three billion dollars for the entire rural transportation framework, including highways. So the infrastructure proposal is a wide collection across the whole federal government, um, addressing climate change issues and providing job-creating investments. Presently, Congress is reviewing the proposal. The committees of jurisdiction are looking at the pieces of the proposal that fit within their mission area and beginning to draft legislation around the concepts. The Speaker has advised that, uh, she plans to have the infrastructure bill on the House floor this summer, so there's a lot of work to be done there. Um, meanwhile, the administration is working to secure bipartisan support, uh, but the end of the day, we'll probably be relying on the Democratic majority in the House and the Senate to, to pass the measure, and at this point, um, you know, uh, there's a lot of work to be done in that, in that arena. Um, the second and third approaches I wanted to talk about today are kind of interrelated, so I'll talk about them together. The first one, uh, focusing on approaches for infrastructure opportunity, first one being the fiscal year twenty thousand twenty-two appropriations process that's now beginning to, to start. And the third approach that's tied into that is really the authorization process, but specifically focusing on the highway reauthorization process. Um, so, you know, what, what's interesting is that, uh, the process in terms of appropriations is really quite different, uh, this year in that the House majority and most recently House minority have decided that it wants to return to earmarks. Um, or as the phrase is this year, "community project funding." So wherein, what we have there is in both the appropriations bill and the authorization bill, um, members are, um, allowed to go forward with specific funding requests for projects in the district. This is the first time Congress has allowed this in ten years, so there's a lot of, um, interest, a lot of forms, a lot of scrutiny, um, focused on this. And for us, we've been busy putting together both appropriations and authorization forms, um, and thus the request, uh, before you today, uh, the letter that, uh, is under your consideration for sending to Congressman McClintock that would support a, a community project funding request for, uh, wagon trail, the eastern segment, the final segment, um, for his consideration in sending forward for inclusion in either the appropriations bill or the highway reauthorization bill. However, in the last several weeks, in discussions with the Congressman's office, we've learned that the Congressman is, uh, very much opposed to proceeding with earmarks. Um, it's interesting because he supported the request for wagon trail last year and the year before, and it's very, very similar, but in that scenario, it was, we were, um, pursuing DOT grants, but the same kind of request for, uh, design and construction funding. Um, actually, I think this request is smaller than it was last year, but, um, the Congressman does not believe in requesting specific project funding, um, from either the Appropriations Committee or the Authorization Committee, so that's a, that's a significant issue for us. Um, however, we have been working closely with our senators' offices, and the state at play there is, um, that the Senate has not yet decided, and it's really gonna turn on the Senate Appropriations Committee making its decision about this. They've not yet decided whether they're gonna, um, follow the House approach and go with earmarks or not, and so we are, um, closely watching that. Um, it would be, I would say, extremely unusual for the House to go ahead with earmarks in an appropriation, authorization bill, and the Senate not to do so, but, you know, we have a unusual year. Um, my thought about this is that, from, from discussions that I've had, i- it feels like the Senate probably will decide that it will want to go ahead and earmark. Um, they're taking their time to probably limit the amount of requests to come forward, um, but what they'll probably do is put together very strict rules for transparency and, um, only certain kinds of entities like public agencies can request. There's gotta be letters of support, um, around that, so there's, there'll be certain rules, and then as soon as the rules come out, then the senators will put together their forms, and there won't be much time, so, so we are working now to lay the groundwork to make sure that we can move quickly, um, once the rules are formalized. Um, and we've advised both, um, the senators' offices, Senator Feinstein, Senator Padilla, that we are interested in a community project funding request, and, uh, and we have one to make. Um, and, uh, so what we're doing is preparing that information based on what we have done over on the House side. There was a lot of, um, detailed requests put together there around the forms, so we have the information that we'll need. We've got letters of support. I know the county's looking at one right now. We've got one from Caltrans, from, um, CCOG as well. Um, but that will be requested on the Senate side, um, too. So we will also put together, uh, similar letters to what we have for Congressman McClintock, for Senator Feinstein, and Senator Padilla, and we'll probably do that sooner rather than later, uh, because it will probably be sort of a rush-rush situation. As soon as they get the guidance, they'll put together the forms, and then we'll have to add quickly, so we're preparing ourselves for that now. Um, and essentially, what we'll be doing is, uh, requesting to fold funding for the wagon tra- trail project into the Senate Transportation Appropriations Bill as a community project funding request. Um, and with that, why don't I stop there and, and open it up to questions, because I'm sure there are some, to talk about the process and where we stand and, uh, where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. Um, Mr. Toffenelli, Ms. Fuldorff, you, uh, both brought this forward, uh, working with COG and, uh, working towards supporting, uh, wagon trail. Um, I would like to give you both the opportunity to, uh, make any comments or put forward any question, questions now.
This project, wagon trail project, as everybody knows, been here for, been going on for the last at least fifteen years. And we, we still are not fully funded for the entire stretch from Copper to, to the city, the Angels. Um, what we're requesting here is for the final leg, um, funding, and I'm not sure this, what we're asking for is gonna be the total amount that we need, but, um, we certainly are in support of this. I am personally. I'm personally thinking of writing a letter to Mr. McClintock myself in his office, uh, requesting him to at least give some thought to the process of earmarks. I know he's dead, dead against it. Um, they were part of the, um, ten years ago, as Mia brought up, when they stopped earmarks because they were getting out of hand. Um, but, um, I think this is, this is something that we really need to get his attention on so we can finally finish this project over the course of a number of years. We are a rural, um, area of, of this county, of, of California, and to find funds for a project this size is very difficult. But I'm in full support of this, full support of writing this letter. And COG was to, we had a seven-zero vote for, um, sending this letter or similar letter like this to Mr. McClintock.
Ms. Fuldorff?
And I just wanted to add, um, with gay, that Caltrans has also through COG, um, given a letter of support on this project as well. So, um, they, this is an all-around, from the state to local, that, um, is supporting, supporting this.
Mr. Garrett Mindy, Ms. Callaway? Nothing at this time? All right. Um, w- with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment, and then we can deliberate further after public comment.
There's no public comment at this time?
Thank you. So with that, um, we have some options here. Ms. Fuldorff, uh, Mr. Toffenelli, is there?
If we approve, I have, if we approve this letter, will that we need to come back to change it, um, the letterhead to our senators or anyone at the appropriations? Or can we, um, request a modification, so modification with the timeline that she discussed?
Counsel?
So the, I'm sorry, so the question is that, whether the, this board item would be sufficient to then send basically the same letter to other electeds? Um, I think, and I apologize, I'm refreshing my memory on precisely what the, how the item was agendized. Um, it was agendized specifically as a letter to Congressman McClintock. Um, that said, um, I'll tell you what Supervisor Fuldorff, I will work with, um, the interim CAO to make sure that we can, um, tweak it, and if we need to, quickly get it back in front of the board, like next week, we can obviously do that, and, um... the board, like next week, we can obviously do that. And that's a good, it's a good point and we will make sure that that can get done.
Will we be able to amend or modify our vote today to be able to facilitate that?
My only concern Supervisor Stopper is that it was agendized specifically as a letter to Congressman McClintock. And so, but I think, you know, we obviously have, the board, I think, seems very interested, obviously, in tweaking the letter to where we could send it to other representatives as well. And we will work on that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, my question's for Mia. Mia, we were just talking about bringing this back next week if we have to for amending it, but that would be the 20th. What's before us is the cutoff date is, or the deadline for the House members to request projects to be included in the bill is April 23rd. By the time we get this done on the 20th and then the mail and sent off, it won't be received till that time. So is there a deadline that we're looking at?
Yeah, I think if you're talking about taking action on the 20th, that would be sufficient because if it's acceptable with everyone, the letter, the executed letter could then be emailed to me and I can email it to staff and speak with staff about it so that they have it in hand. I don't think they need the original. I think an emailed scanned version will be sufficient. So I think if we can go on that timetable, it would work for next week.
And I apologize Supervisor Toffenelli, I was probably unclear in my response. I absolutely think the board can and should take action if they're prepared to do so on this letter to Congressman McClintock today. I merely meant that if there were additional representatives to whom the board wanted to send a letter, we can get those agendized for a week from today.
All right. Thank you.
Of course.
Any further, my apologies. Ms. O'Connell, please.
I'm sorry, I just, I thought I heard the supervisor say something with regard to, or maybe I was just hoping, with regard to further discussion with Congressman McClintock, I would just offer for you that if any of the supervisors felt comfortable, you know, a personal discussion with the congressman to talk about the health and safety issues with regard to our request. This is not a, you know, back of the envelope, late at night, you know, private sector kind of request. This is a full-on community request that really will go to improve the quality of life. And it is a health and safety request, as far as I'm concerned, for the county. Well-supported, as the supervisor mentioned, not only by Caltrans, but by COG. There's every reason to, for the congressman, one more time, to support this as a public agency request. So if you deem it advisable, I would suggest any kind of personal conversation with the congressman, just to talk about the public safety aspect of this request would be most helpful.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. I got to turn on my mic. Any further board comments? Would that all entertain a motion?
I would make a motion to accept this or move this item forward with the addition that we expand these letters to any other elected official that needs to go to. Not only this specifically says McClintock, but I want to expand that. That would be my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf.
I'd like to make a comment. If you want the same letter to go to the Senate, I oppose it. It's not that I oppose the concept, I oppose the structure of the letter. So I have no problem with this letter going to McClintock. It's been advertised, but if we do a letter to the Senate, I'd like it modified. So I'd like to make an amended motion.
I think they got, I think staff had a week to make the adjustments if they're going to bring it back on Tuesday.
I.
That's not what I thought I heard Supervisor Toffenelli say.
Yeah, we, right now, we have a motion and a second. You know, any proposed changes might have come up before the motion and second. Right now, we were set forth unless Mr. Toffenelli is willing to retract his motion.
I will amend the motion to meet the needs of Supervisor Callaway, to adjust the letter, make adjustments on the letter if it goes out to anybody different than Mr. McClintock.
Very good, very good. Then, so it's just going out to Mr. McClintock and then we will be restructuring the letter in the future for what we send to the Senate. That's the understanding on the motion right now. So the amended motion's put forward. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fulendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote to the board. Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. We really appreciate your time. We look forward to seeing you in the near future.
Thank you so much. It's wonderful to be with you and good to see everybody. Thank you and we'll stay in touch.
Bye. Item 26 or 27, I'm going to leave with the regular agenda meeting and we'll get to that when we get to it. So now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. So I'm going to start off by go ahead and pulling item number 14. Is there any staff that would like to pull any items from the consent agenda? There any supervisors that would like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Any public?
None at this time.
Not at this time? Okay, so do we have a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote to the board. So item 14, Ms. Clerk, can you read that one for us?
Yes. Item 14, Human Resources, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing Changes to the Integrated Waste Management Operations Supervisor Job Description and Updating the Title and Duties of Plans Examiner/Engineer to Supervising Plans Examiner.
I pulled this item, a request of the public, a person from the public. So if that person from the public has any questions, they may ask them now.
That individual's not present?
Okay. With that, Judy, can you just give us a brief explanation of what the item is and then we'll move to any public comment?
Yes, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. And what this item is, is there were, there was a minor change made to the Integrated Waste Management Operations Supervisor. And that change was taking the requirement to have a commercial driver's license because this position is not responsible for operating the heavy equipment. That is a responsibility of the foreman on site. And taking that requirement away enabled us to have a larger candidate pool.
Thank you.
Sorry?
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. That seems pretty straightforward. I appreciate it. Any further board comments or questions? Any public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Okay. Would that all entertain a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. With that, I'm going to go ahead and give us a 10-minute break and then we can move on to the remainder of the regular agenda. Welcome back to the Board of Supervisors meeting, regular board meeting of April 13, 2021. We will be moving to the remainder of the regular agenda. Item number 27, Division of Cannabis Control, Approve Board Letter of Support to State Senator Ana Caballero Regarding SB 59 Extending the Sunset Date for Provisional Licensing Under the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act (MACURSA). I'm just going to say that the Senate yesterday significantly changed SB 59, the letter that's before us, because these amendments didn't come through until this morning and we were just made aware of it. This, the letter as it's put forward right now does not apply in the same way with the proposed amendments at this time. So I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Wayland just give a brief description on the changes and what we're, why we're bringing this forward. And then I'm going to propose that we pull this item and bring it back in the following meeting. Mr. Wayland?
Mr. Wayland.
Oh, he's having trouble getting into the meeting. I think he got dropped. Thank you, Mr. Wayland. I just did a brief description as I described to you earlier. Can you proceed with your description of what's going on with SB 59 and why we're going to be pulling this item for, or proposing to pull the item for a future, bring it back revised so that fits what the Senate is doing?
Yes, sir. So this is a bill, as Chairman Stopper alluded to, that is important to us at the Division of Cannabis Control in the county because it impacts significantly how our process for permitting integrates with the state's licensing process. And as he mentioned, there were some changes introduced yesterday that are reflected as of this morning in the proposed bill. And so we want to take a pause and be able to analyze that a little further before this is brought back before the board, specifically as to sunset dates for the provisional licensing provision that allows us to issue and validate permits with a state provisional license as opposed to an annual license. And so I think that, Mr. Chair, the approach that you described would be prudent and we recommend that.
Thank you, Mr. Wayland. Any board comments to these ends? Public comment?
There's no public comment at this time.
Thank you. Do we need to agree as a board to pull this item or can we pull it and move on without a vote? Counsel?
So I think you may as well just have a motion to move it to April 20th.
Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli?
Is it, is it staff pulling this? Isn't Greg pulling this item instead of the board? From what I just saw him say and what he was saying, that he is the one pulling it. So do we still need a motion?
He is. It's yes, in order for it to be moved specifically to the 20th without needing to go through the whole re-agenda process again, that would be simpler.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Can I get a motion to move it, this item, to the 20th?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guaramendi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote to the board to move to the 20th. Thank you very much, Ms. Edwards and Mr. Wayland. Item 28, Human Resources, Adopt a Resolution Appointing Robert Pakenger to the Position of Public Works and Transportation Director effective April 13, 2021. Mr. Pakenger? Are you there?
Good to see you, sir. Good morning, Chair.
We'll go ahead and move to, any board comments? Any, any public comment?
Kathy Galino here.
Hello, Kathy.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Board. I just want to say congratulations to Robert. I'm very excited. I enjoy working with him and he's a great asset to our county.
Thank you, Ms. Galino. Any further public comment?
For Chair Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. And I would also like to say in the six years that, or almost six years that I have been with the county, I have worked with Robert in several different issues when he was managing integrated waste and some other things. And I look forward to working with Robert as the Public Works Director. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Further public comment?
There's no.
Can I say something?
Absolutely, Mr. Pakenger.
Okay. Chair Stockton Supervisors, thank you for your support. Thank you also to my county, to my county partners, especially my public works team. I have received support from all of you for many years. I hope to continue to merit your support. You will always have mine. We have a lot of work to do. We will get it done together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pakenger. You know, I'd personally like to say in your tenure, but that seems a bit short, your three tenures working for the county showed your investment into this county, your loyalty, you know, your dedication. We appreciate you and this is well-earned from my perspective. Any further board comments? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, so moved?
Thank you, Mr. Guaramendi. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you very much, Mr. Pakenger.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's move to item number 29, Library, Approve the MOU with Amler Unified School District for providing grab-and-go lunches to the Calvers County Library for curbside delivery of lunches for the county's schoolchildren, June 14, 2021, through August 6, 2021. Any board comments? Public comment?
Nancy Giddens is present to speak.
May I speak to it?
Absolutely, Nancy. Good to see you once again today.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, Nancy Giddens, County Librarian. Happy to see you again today. So as you know, from June 15 through July 31 last summer, we served lunches, 2,619 grab-and-go lunches. And we want to do this again this year because it was so successful and so appreciated by our families. So the economic impact of the pandemic is still with us and we feel like this service is still very much needed. This summer, we hope to reach out to communities in Mulcahy and also Railroad Flat because people from those communities came down to get lunches. So we feel like we're going to meet them sort of halfway and. So we feel like we're going to meet them sort of halfway and trade off and let them deliver in their more close to home. So once again, we'll collect our lunches daily at Argonaut High School in Jackson, and we safely transport them back to the central library using coolers and everything that has been approved by Environmental Health. And we have in place all of our safe and sanitary protocols. And we deliver outside on our patio or through the door at other sites. And these are cold, safely packed lunches which have been prepared by a certified school lunch preparation site at Argonaut High School. The library has already had its inspection this year from Environmental Health, and we've successfully passed. We will use our small commercial refrigerator here to store any leftover food that we give away here. At other sites, we must give it all away or dispose of it because we can't save it from day to day. So our delivery is safe. Everyone wears masks. Some of them even wear gloves. And our patio is set up with a pop-up and a table and safe distancing for all the people who come up to wait as we deliver. So in this year, once again, as part of our lunch program, we're going to offer the summer reading packets, takeaway summer reading packets. And these will include, once again, a book and lots of fun activities for the kids. Last year, the people who participated in the lunch program said that those packets were almost as valuable to them as was the food because their children were well occupied. They all got a little six-book library. And this week, we're expanding it to eight weeks. So this week, this year, they'll get eight books from us. And we're just so pleased that we can offer this service. So we hope to increase our services all across the line and would really appreciate your approving this MOU with Amador. I've already arranged everything with their superintendent and their food provider, and they're very much on board. Their school board will meet tomorrow night and sign the MOU if you sign. So I ask you to do that. Thank you.
Very much appreciated, Ms. Giddens. This is a great asset to the community for many children that don't necessarily have the access to the nutrition or the books for learning during the summer. So it's greatly appreciated. Is there any further public comment?
Yes, Brianna Lerman?
Brianna?
Hi there. Brianna Lerman, California Health and Wellness. We are the Medical Plan, one of the two Medical Plans in your county. And actually, I was listening to this, really interested in this. Maybe something that's appropriate for takeaway with a speaker. But I'm thinking that this program probably serves many of the children who are Medical coincidentally that we might be covering. And I'm wondering, I'm wondering if maybe there is some collaboration there that I can follow up with you on, given that you're probably bringing the lunches to children we serve. And maybe we can assist in that, A, identifying children in need, and B, just working with you in the community. I heard you mentioned Amador. We also serve Amador County. So not so much a public comment as a question as to how we can help to support you. And maybe I'll reach out to you directly?
Yes, I would love for you to. We'd love to help as many children as we can, especially those who really have a need in the summertime. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No further public comment.
Thank you very much. If there's no further questions by the board, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
This is my favorite part, you know. So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Garamendi, for the motion. Ms. Callaway, thank you for your second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you very much, Ms. Giddens.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Our next item, 30. Assessor. Adopt a resolution authorizing the proration of taxes resulting from escape assessments. Ms. Leslie Davis, are you available?
Leslie? Leslie, are you with us?
I was with you, and the host turned everything off. So can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Ms. Davis. Good to hear your voice.
Okay, so you can't see me. You get to see Blitzen because the host turned off the video as well. Mr. Chair, honorable members of the board, Leslie Davis, County Assessor. I am here today to ask for the board to adopt a resolution that authorizes proration of taxes resulting from escape assessments. Under the law, an escape assessment is anything where we are increasing the value over what it had been enrolled at. So that's why they're called escape assessments. It's not any kind of derogatory term. It's just a legal term. As you all know, we are way behind on our work. We literally have thousands of backlogged assessments. And the problem that we are running into is that in many cases, when we are processing those role corrections, the property has sold. In order for us to prorate those assessments during a year in which the sale has occurred, we need board authorization. So we have the authority to do that, and that is what we're bringing forward today. I have spoken to the auditor, controller, and the treasure tax collector, both of whom agree with this request. It's just fairly simple request that asks you to authorize the assessor to prorate those escape assessments pursuant to revenue and taxation code 531.2C.
Any questions or comments by the board? Ms. Davis, now, I agree this will be more fair to, you know, the people buying, much less the people selling. Because explain real quick what dates are, you know, if someone was to buy in the middle of the year, how this applies, and what would happen if we approved the prorate, and how it's beneficial to either the person that owns the property or the person that buys the property from said owner?
Okay, you can all need to shake notes. It'll be a pop quiz. Essentially, if we are reassessing property and we have to do role corrections or escape assessments, then it matters who owned the property on January 1 and whether or not there was a bona fide transfer on or after July 1 of the year being corrected. If there was a transfer after July 1 of the year being corrected, then the escape assessment is unsecured to the prior owner. But if there is a transfer, say, in March, then it is secured to the real property. And quite often, what happens is the assessee of record on January 1, who is getting the bill and getting the notice, thinks to themselves, I don't own the property anymore. I'm not going to pay this. If they don't pay it, that increase is secured to the real property. And the new owner then is essentially responsible for that bill beginning July 1. So what this does is it allows us to prorate to the owners based on their ownership by number of days. In the case that I just described, where the prior owner gets the bill and decides not to pay it, or they do decide to pay it, but they think the new owner owes them money because of their civil contract, then they have to work that out among themselves. What this does is it gives us an opportunity to do that proration, and it makes it a little bit easier for the tax collector where it comes to their collection efforts.
That's the way I understand it. It's more fair to both parties also, although it may create a small amount more work in your office?
I'm not so sure I'd say a small amount of work, but the work, I think, will have an offset. We spend an inordinate amount of time answering questions of people who are affected by these escape assessments and, in some cases, yelling at us because of them. I think that if they're prorated, the offset will be we won't get as many questions. It will make sense to them that they are only paying the increase in taxes for the number of days that they owned property.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any further questions or comments by the board? Oh, Ms. Callaway?
Ms. Davis, how long is this resolution good for? Is there a timeframe on, and this will come back again in next year or five years, what have you? I mean, why weren't we doing this 20 years ago?
Well, this resolution is good in perpetuity. There is no automatic sunset on it, nor is there a sunset in the law for this provision. And the reason you weren't doing it 20 years ago is we didn't have this kind of problem. So we had not gotten this far behind. We weren't dealing with the volume of role corrections where there was the potential for the property to have resold. So it was a very minor issue in the past. It has, has become a larger issue now. And, and we've decided, and then dare I say, we, the auditor, the tax collector, and I have decided that it would work better if we prorated. It just requires your authorization to go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any further board comments or questions? With that, I will go to public comment.
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. Is there, if there's no further comments by board members, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Follendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you very much, Ms. Davis, for bringing this forward to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members, for approving this request.
Item 31, Health and Human Services Agency. Informational Presentation and Discussion Regarding Calvers County Potentially Signing a Letter of Intent with Health Plan of San Joaquin Altering the County's Managed Healthcare Model.
Lori Yarland, you're connected?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to discuss further the consideration for signing a letter of intent with the health plan of San Joaquin. I have a presentation to share, and I hope in this presentation to kind of address the why behind this is happening, some other factors that might speak to the consideration for the letter of intent, but also to provide a backdrop for the managed healthcare and what the plan options are for Calvers County. So although this is a PowerPoint presentation, if anyone has any questions, please don't hesitate to ask me. If no questions during the presentation, then I will just take questions at the end. Before we get started, is there, are there any questions? Okay, then.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Let's see. Oh, shoot. One second here. So, let's see. Okay, so can I see a thumbs up by someone if you can see the presentation?
That's affirmative.
Okay, thank you. So, let's see. Here we go. So the focus of this presentation this morning is to really look at, to share a little bit of information regarding Medical Managed Care models, options for transitioning to a two-plan model or a county-organized healthcare system. The why behind considering transitioning to a new-plan model and the next steps for Calvers County should we decide to transition to a new model? What is Medical Managed Care? Basically, California Healthcare Services is California's Medicaid agency that is responsible for the permit of healthcare plans, administering contracts, and providing oversight and performance measurements. Medical is the largest provider of health insurance to Californians covering 1/3 of the population, or 14 million residents. Medical Managed Care moved away from fee-for-services to a managed care or paying a flat rate for members back in about 2012. Of that number, nearly 80% or 10.6 million of Medical beneficiaries received their care through a managed care delivery service. In Calvers County, to date, there are approximately 12,074 Medical beneficiaries. Within the state of California, there are six different managed care models. The first managed care model is basically a county-operated healthcare system. And so in those counties, they have one county-operated system. Then you have a geographic managed care, and within that, you have several commercial plans within a county. You also have a two-plan model, which is one commercial plan and one local initiative. And then you have the regional model, which are two commercial plans. And then you have the San Benito model, which is one commercial plan and one fee-for-service plan. And then you have the imperial model, which is two commercial plans. Currently, Calvers County is here in the yellow. We are a regional model. So we have two commercial plans that serve our residents. If we were to consider changing our model plan, we would consider moving to the two-plan model, which would include a local initiative. And I will be talking about what that local initiative shortly. And we would also have one commercial plan. So the commercial plan would essentially be whichever healthcare provider that the state ends up selecting after their RFP process. So we would have one of those commercial plans in addition to a local initiative if we were to change our model plan. You will notice that for the yellow areas, it's, there's 18 different counties. Let me show you. And these are the counties. So all of these folks, back in 2012, when the state was allowing folks, counties, to pick their model, these counties opted to stay, they were lumped together, and they were called the regional model. So it kind of stands quite a ways. But you'll also notice surrounding us, the purple. These are the folks that have the two-plan model, which is number three. I thought the map was interesting. So what is important to note is the why. Department of Healthcare Services is giving counties an option to now consider changing their plan. And I think there are two reasons. First and foremost, the contracts for the current commercial plans is expiring in 2024. So they're going to start a new RFP process, and they want to give counties a voice. But also, I think what's sparking the backdrop for the state to allow counties to change their model is an auditor, an investigation, excuse me, an audit that took place by the state auditor's office in 2018. And it really looked at, up here in the right-hand corner, the title of the audit was Department of Healthcare Services. It is not insured that Medical beneficiaries in some rural counties have reasonable access to care. I've included the link to that audit if it's a public document, if anyone's interested in reading the full report. It's a robust report. But today, my purpose is, is just to provide a little bit of oversight as to what the audit found. So in essence, if all things being equal, for rural counties, Medical enrollees' access to primary care in regional model counties is comparable to enrollees in all other rural areas. So whether you're down in, or up in Alpine, Calvers County, or you're up in your county, the enrollment to care is the same in all rural counties. So there is no one county that has more enrollees or less enrollees. It's pretty equal. Access to specialty care is difficult for enrollees in regional model counties. As I shared earlier, Calvers County is one of those counties within the regional model. But they're speaking about us. The quality of care provided to enrollees in regional model counties was worse, on average, than enrollees in other models. Overall satisfaction of regional model enrollees is lower relative to other rural counties in the state. So, there are other rural counties, but they are not part of the regional model. So, this is speaking to other rural counties and the satisfaction by the beneficiaries. Providers and county officials in regional model counties are concerned with the performance of the two regional managed care plans currently. Rural counties struggle to find specialty healthcare. Rural beneficiaries tend to be older, lower income, more likely to be unemployed, and import help, making them more expensive to provide healthcare to. Health plans have difficulty distributing the risk and cost of healthcare throughout smaller populations because there is insufficient numbers of healthier enrollees to offset the higher cost. Building a comprehensive provider network that meets standards is very difficult, and lack of competition can result in health plans that do not have leverage when negotiating contracts, driving up the cost of healthcare in rural counties. Now, of course, the representatives, the representatives of the two regional models, which is Anthem and Well, Health and Wellness, they are, their response to the auditor's report is that they are working with stakeholders to make improvements in, in the rural counties. One of the things I will share is that one of the challenges within the regional counties is that by law, beneficiaries shouldn't have to drive more than 60 miles to, for, for a provider. And in some rural counties, one of the examples was that a beneficiary had to drive 150 miles for a gynecology appointment. And so, that is outside of the scope of regulations, and that's something that the providers are actually working to, to adjust. So, this slide just really is to provide a timeline. We're already here in the March 21 with the letter of intent. In September, the Department of Health, the state will need to make a statutory change for approved, which is approved by legislation. In late 2021, they're going to finish their RFP process, and then DHCS will work with the Federal Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services for any necessary federal waiver or amendment after the state authority is enacted. And then, of course, 2024, that's when the current contract would expire and the new contracts and plans would begin. So, what does the procurement of new plans mean for Calvers County? So, basically, all commercial Medi-Cal plans are to be re-referred. This impacts urban and rural counties, including small rural eastern Sierra and Gold Country counties. That's us. Anthem and Health and Wellness contracts must be re-referred. So, they're going to have to submit an RFP to the state, and if selected, they would then get a contract to go forward serving the counties. I will say that back in 2012, there were several plans that RFP'd with the state, but of all those plans, only two were found qualified to provide services to the Medi-Cal beneficiaries, and that was Anthem and the Health and Wellness. And so, that potentially could be the case in 2024, but if not, we might have other options as well. The current real, the current regional model is likely to be split into different plans and different models, basically because all counties are, being given an option to change their model plan if they would like. Rural counties may take this opportunity to reevaluate the potential on plans and models that will serve their beneficiaries and providers. So, that's basically what we're doing now. We're looking at what we currently have, and we're looking at the opportunity to partner with another plan and to see, is this something that, do we want to explore this? Would it meet the needs of our citizens? So, the health plan of San Joaquin is interested in expanding to the Gold Country area, including Calveras, Alpine, and El Dorado County. I will say that Alpine's decision to move forward with the letter of intent is dependent on El Dorado County. And speaking with staff in El Dorado County, it does sound like it's going to be a favorable outcome. They were, their board of supervisors was hearing this matter today, so we should know today whether or not they are moving forward with the letter of intent. So, regional counties have several options with respect to changing our, our health can, health plan model. We can transition to a two-plan model. That is basically, we have an option to establish our own local initiative, or we can join an existing initiative. The other option we have is we can transition to a county-operated healthcare system, or we can establish our own county-operated healthcare system. So, basically, the choice that we make depends on the county model preference, individually or collectively, available federal and state local statutory authority for preferred approach. If joining an existing plan, viability of that plan's expansion in compliance with Medi-Cal program requirements is necessary. And I will say that looking at the requirements to establish a new two, a local initiative or a county-operated healthcare system, that would be a very big lift for Calvers County. Labor-intensive, very expensive, and if I was asked, I would say that that would not be a recommendation because of the lift involved in that. So, joining an existing local initiative or county-operated system would be preferred. So, what is a local plan? A local plan is basically established by the community to serve the health needs of the underserved populations. It's formed pursuant to state and federal statute as a public agency, independent of the county, exception contra Costa Health Plan, formed through local ordinance or joint powers agreements and a one or more boards of supervisors. So, it is governed by a commission whose membership is prescribed in the ordinance or statute, and it's subject to California's Fair Political Practices Law and Ralph M. Brown Open Meeting Law Brown Act. It basically operates a health plan that contracts principally with the public payers. So, what's important about a local plan is it's local. So, it is developed within an area by, by the citizens, by the, the community representatives, and they are, they understand the needs of, of the local community. Health plan of San Joaquin is a local initiative. So, the county responsibility for a local initiative or a county-operated healthcare system. So, if we're going to establish a new system, local leadership must be familiar with, with and prepared to meet rigorous financial and administrative requirements for operating the plan. Start-up requires substantial time and investment beyond initial capitalization requirements. Need for federal statutory authority. I need, need center for Medicaid and Medicare Services approval. If we join a new plan, or excuse me, an existing plan, we only need CNS approval. We do not need federal statutory authorization. County board of supervisors' action is needed to initiate change to the county's model, Medi-Cal delivery model, and, and this seems to be the most realistic option for Calvers County. So, with respect to the supervisors' action needed, we would need to submit a county ordinance, basically changing the county's, identifying that the county is changing its Medi-Cal model plan. So, what plans are interested in working with Calvers County? So, currently, the health plan of San Joaquin County has expressed interest in expanding their services to Calvers County, Alpine County, and El Dorado County. We also have our current providers, which is California Health and Wellness and Anthem. The degree to which we can continue to work with our current providers will depend on the outcome of the state's RFP. If they are selected, then of course, they would be an option for Calvers County in 2024. Because DHCS plans to establish new managed care contracts with the health plans currently serving the regional model, counties, after its contract expired in 2013, it is an ideal time for counties to explore transitioning to a managed care model if we desire to do so. The county-operated healthcare system model is used in 22 other counties in the state and may provide beneficiaries in regional models with better access to care than they receive through their current health plans. These statements that I am sharing, this is coming from the auditor's report regarding the status of services to regional counties. Joining a county-operated healthcare system would likely provide the beneficiaries with access to greater proportion of the Medi-Cal providers in their geographical area, thereby reducing the distance that beneficiaries would have to drive to receive care. One thing that's important about a local initiative plan is that it's local. And so, geographically, it makes sense if you are partnering with a plan that is your borders touch or is in close proximity. If I was to go back to the map to show you, of all the plans that are in close proximity to Calvers County, San Joaquin County is the only plan that actually touches our borders, and they also serve Santa Claus County as well. So, to date, the things that have taken place, county staff is participating in meetings with our regional model counties facilitated by the Cal, California Health Executive Association staff. County staff is meeting weekly with health plan of San Joaquin to continue exploring a future partnership. County staff is met with health plan of San Joaquin to confirm interest in Calvers County. County staff has met with California Health and Wellness Plan to begin discussing improving healthcare outcomes for Calvers County citizens. So, for next steps. So, next steps, the board would need to consider changing the county's healthcare model from a regional model to a two-plan model, which would involve a commercial plan and a public plan. So, if in 20, 2024, if we opt to change our model, we would have the local initiative plan, which is the health plan of San Joaquin, and then we would select one of the RFP recipients from the state, and then we would have one of those commercial plans in addition to the local initiative.
My apologies for the interruption. Is there any way we can magnify that? We cannot read it on the screen in here.
Can you read that?
Yeah, but it's cut, it's cut off. Okay, let's just proceed for now, but i- in the future, let's consider having the, the slideshow as part of the agenda packet.
Of course.
Thank you.
I will share this email as well, or this slideshow.
That's appreciated.
To board of supervisors' direction to pursue a relationship with health plan of San Joaquin County or to stay in a regional model with the knowledge that the outcome is unknown. So, if we don't make a choice to go with a local initiative, then come 2024, we don't know what the outcome of the RFPs will be. So, essentially, it could be our two current providers, or it could be someone new. We don't know. County is interested in pursuing the model, other than the regional model, would need to submit their RFP, or excuse me, their LOI by April 30. And the, I just want to note that the LOI, the letter of intent, does not commit Calvers County to anything. However, the LOI once submitted to the state, however, if no LOI is submitted, then there's nothing more for the county to do, and the state will RFP for the new providers in 2024. After the LOI is submitted to the state, the state will assess the health plan of San Joaquin to determine the financial and organizational bandwidth to which that plan can support the expansion. So, some things that are going to continue, staff will continue to meet with the health plan of San Joaquin. Department, DHCS does not require a county-operated health system to submit an RFP, but what they do have to submit is the letter of intent. And the letter of intent is a rigorous document package with financials, organizational structure, network capacity, and that is submitted to the state, and the state then reviews that to see if they, if the county health plan has the capacity to support a county. So, it's not an RFP, but it's very similar to an RFP. And I have talked with health plan of San Joaquin, and by the end of next week, they're going to share with me a copy of their draft, letter of intent, to share with the board of supervisors for your review. The health plan of San Joaquin currently serves 366,000 members. Expanding their model to Calvers County, El Dorado, and Alpine will increase their membership by 40,000. If even, if only 50% of the expansion agree to sign on to the health plan of San Joaquin, that would only expand their, their, their services to 20,000 people. So, clearly, the number that they're currently serving would not, working with the additional counties, would not impact their capacity to a great degree. Should Calvers County sign their letter of intent, the health plan of San Joaquin legal team will begin drafting the county's ordinance to formalize the county's model change choice, and that will just be a draft for our legal team and our county to review and make changes as necessary. Department of Healthcare Services may deny Calvers County's request to partner with the health plan of San Joaquin based on the state's vetting. If it turns out that they don't think that the health plan of San Joaquin can meet the needs of the, the county's requesting to partner with them, then they will deny that request. And then, Calvers County would remain a regional county, and we would then, we would then, in 2024, select two commercial plans based on the state's RFP outcome. I know that was a lot of information to share, and again, I will, I will share the PowerPoint presentation if there's any information in there that you would like to read, or if you want to access the auditor's report as well. So, with that, I would like to open this up for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Garmendy, they also just forwarded us the slideshow via email, so if there's anything you would like to look at while we're deliberating, it's...
I could do that right now.
No, it's, it's, we just got it from...
Oh, got it. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Chair Stoppard, if I could jump in real quick. I just want to say that, you know, this, this item, although described, it was supposed to be a discussion informational item for today, followed by an action item on the 27th. In consulting with the board clerk, clearly, the body describes this as an informational discussion item, but then we had an action item agendized there, so I apologize for that confusion. But to be clear, we weren't necessarily seeking any action today on this. It was more for Laura to be able to, you know, follow up on some questions, get some more information, and try to just bring some clarity on this very complex topic to those of you in the board, and just to be transparent and open about, you know, what we've seen, what we've learned, and give you, members of the board, an opportunity to discuss it prior to moving to what will also be agendized as an action item on the 27th. So, I'll put that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Luch. Mr. Garmendy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, thank you, Sam. Thank you, Laura. As you both are aware, I've spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks trying to do a deep dive on this because I found it very confusing last time we did this. And I will tell you that after two weeks of research, including going through the minutes of health plan, plan of San Joaquin, talking to lobbyists and, and RCRC, I am more confused than when I started two weeks ago. It is not getting clearer to me, first off, why Department of Healthcare Services is deciding to drop this on our healthcare providers in the middle of a pandemic after 12 years or 10 years if not. So, that's, that's a concern. I have a great deal of concern about the continuity of the programs, considering that Tuolumne and Amador passed on this. So, how is health plan of San Joaquin going to work with El Dorado, which has taken it up this afternoon, and how that's going to impact with Alpine? I have concerns about how it's going to impact Mark Twain Medical Center. And with, out with Tuolumne and Amador out of the mix, a lot of our constituents go to either to one side of the river of us or the other for their healthcare, and I want to make sure that's covered. I have concerns about the governance of this. We were told there was a spot on their board, and we're all very familiar with JPAs and what those mean. It's 11 seats on that board now. There's no indication yet as to what status we'd have. I have concerns regarding competition and the fact that health plan of San Joaquin will not have to compete, but rather will have a place in the queue, and then the other two can compete for that other slot. I have concerns about what happens if we're unable to negotiate a deal with health plan of San Joaquin, and how does that leave us with the state? And the list goes on and on and on into greater detail. I don't know what's happening here, but it sort of popped up quick, at least on my radar, with a letter to get signed in a big hurry, and we're talking about this now, and I'm, don't feel like I've gotten a lot of clarity as to what's going on. And usually, on these type of things, my experience is if it's not simple, then, you know, easy enough to figure out that there may be something else going on, and I'm just, I'm glad we're not taking action on this because I have more questions that I'd like to get answered. I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying I got questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guaramendi. I mean, any time I hear a letter of intent not binding, I have a hard time just believing that because a letter of intent, you know, in all, all, I mean, a letter of intent binding to a certain degree, we have our, you know, we wouldn't send out a letter of intent unless we were agreeing to go down a certain path. So, no, I appreciate the homework you've put into this. You know, it's very confusing to me also. Thank you for that. Any other board questions, comments? Ms. Callaway.
Well, Laura, it seems like Supervisor Guaramendi is saying the same thing that I said to you. I think maybe your slides might give us a little bit of clarification. Is there going to be an item like this on the agenda next week? I mean, I communicated with them several times on lots of things, the same things that Supervisor Guaramendi did.
Yeah, I think, I think there's more discussion needed. There's, there's nothing on the radar for next week for anything like this, but, you know, if the board asks for it, we could move...
I guess my question is, is when does a letter of intent have to be in? I can't remember.
The 30th of this month, I think.
The 30th of this month?
I believe they put in for extension, and we were able to extend it to the later this month. Am I correct, Mr. Leach, on the 30th?
Yeah, that is correct, Chair Stoppard, and that's why we agendized this for the 27th as an action item, to make sure we still, that's a pretty tight timeframe to make sure we get the signature, we need to send it in, if that is the route that the board chooses to go. If not, it doesn't require any action on our part. So, yeah, we either get the momentum we need to get the letter of intent signed and head down this path, or if not, then there's really nothing to do on our part. So I just want to say I appreciate all the time that Laura has put into this. You know, I agree with Supervisor Guaramendi's comment that it's really frustrating that DHCS dropped this on us in the middle of a pandemic. I know Colleen Rodriguez and I were working on this in the early months when this came to my attention when I was first appointed interim, and then Laura really has stepped up and put just a ton of time into learning about this and trying to inform the board. So regardless of which direction it heads, I just want to take a moment to thank Laura because I appreciate all the time she's putting into this. If you would like to have a continued discussion item on the 20th for your special meeting, then I will work with the clerk and make sure that we have a discussion-only item on the 20th. It would be good to know what else you would want us to address outside of Laura. I'm sure you heard Supervisor Guaramendi's continued comments. We're happy to accept more comments between now and then, or questions that you want us to research. That is a pretty quick turnaround. Laura, I'm assuming you're available next Tuesday?
I am, and a lot of the, a lot of the questions that were already posed, they've been explored, and so there's some answers to those currently, so I'm prepared. I mean, I know there's, this is, I wish that we did have more time, and I wish the state didn't just drop it on us like they did, but they did. And because contracts are expiring in 2023, 2024, there's a lot that's involved with that RFP, and so they have to get started with that. And the reason this is happening is because contracts are going to change, regardless of if we, if Calvares County changes their healthcare model or not. And so in 2024, we will be making a selection of a new provider if it's not our current providers. So something will be changing regardless whether we take action on this particular item or not.
Mr. Guaramendi.
Laura, have you, have you had a chance, when we met on this last time, Alpine, there was still time to do this letter, and Alpine, excuse me, Amador and Tuolumne decided not to do this at that time. Alderado's deciding today. With Alpine, with, excuse me, with Amador and Tuolumne out of the mix, is Health Plan, are you sure that Health Plan of San Joaquin still wants to do this? Because when they had their presentation to their board, they were looking more at a regional, and by amalgamating us as a group, they could, they could do better. Has that changed since then, or are they still 100% on board?
They are still 100% on board, and the reason being is that when they actually start to procure contracts to build their network of providers in the new counties, they go directly to the providers that our California, Calvares citizens are currently using. So they, they are already being contacted by providers within our county, asking for templates in case it happens, although Health Plan of San Joaquin has not moved forward whatsoever in starting those conversations. So if Calvares citizens see a provider in Tuolumne or in Amador County, then Health Plan of San Joaquin County's intention is to establish contracts with those providers. With respect to Mark Twain and to Sutter in Amador, so currently, Health Plan of San Joaquin, they have contracts in San Joaquin County and in San Osaslas County with the Health Plan, excuse me, with Sutter. They also have a contract with St. Joseph's Medical Center in Stockton, which is a dignity health. So there is no reason to believe that Mark Twain would not also contract with them because they too are dignity health. So there's, there's a lot, I know there's a lot of unknowns, but we are in a situation where it's unknown regardless. So come 2024, something's going to change with us. And so this does give us an option to have a voice, whether we, whether we decide to sign the LOI or not, at least we're being, we're being given an option to explore the possibility. If we choose not to, then in 2024, we will, as a county, decide which provider will best serve our citizens. So we have decisions to make, whether it's now or whether we wait until 2024.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if I need to, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I agree with you.
I don't know if I need to, if we need to do this in the next meeting. I have a lot of questions I can continue to work with staff to answer them because they get really detailed, probably more detailed than you all want to watch me do for an hour. So I'm willing to work offline as I work through this.
I appreciate that. Ms. Callaway, did you have further?
No, I also sent them lots of questions, and I have more after today. So, and Laura's been very responsive to answering the questions, but it is a complex issue. And I'm glad it's not for a vote today because I'm not comfortable, I would not be comfortable voting on this.
Let me add my thank you to Laura for putting up with literally a couple of hours of phone calls and tons of emails, and I understand that some of these things we don't have an answer to. It's just, it's just a question of what my tolerance is for ambiguity. So, thank you.
Ms. Bolndorff?
Mr. Toffenelli. Good morning, Laura. I think it's still morning. Yes, it is. Bottom line, you know, there's a lot of ifs, ands, and a lot of questions that need to be answered, and hopefully, we'll get to where we need to get. But bottom line, if we join San Joaquin, ultimately, it would be beneficial, more beneficial to the people in, that have Medi-Cal in Calvares County, because it will expand where they can go to get treatment and improve some of the treatments that they are getting now. Is that not correct? I mean, bottom line?
That is what I understand. So there, then our network within the county would be expanded. Calvares County citizens would have essentially San Osaslas County as well as San Joaquin County, that full access to all those providers.
So it would even cut down some of the travel time that was talked about earlier, and number of miles being traveled to get treatment, specialized treatment?
Absolutely, and that's what's important that the auditor's report talked about was the time to travel to see a provider, and it's actually defined in law that 60 miles is really the threshold in trying to reduce the amount of travel. So potentially, yes, partnering with the Health Plan of San Joaquin would widen our network of providers, while also include maintaining the current providers that they have and reduce travel time to go see a provider.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Yes, we have Brianna Herman.
Yes, good morning, some morning. Hi, Brianna Herman, California Health and Wellness. We wanted a current Medi-Cal plan. Just want to touch on a few things briefly. First, Laura, thank you for talking with me, I think it was last week. I don't think I have any comments that would be any surprising, in fact, would underscore so many of the things that you said and what supervisors do have called out to, which is this process is really confusing, and there are a lot of questions. You know, we have been serving your county, Miss Ramon County, for seven years now, and there's a scheduled procurement ahead, and I wanted to make sure that I made very clear we are deeply interested in continuing to serve your county and have every intention of submitting a proposal through that process. I think that why this is also confusing is because this is not a normal process. In defense of the county staff, the state has indeed set up a really tight timeframe, caused some questions under, you know, kind of a sense of urgency on a really, really complex issue, and that's very difficult to navigate. And, you know, I think of the LOI, another word for it is a preliminary contract award, and that is really not the normal way to do things in this type of environment when you're looking at healthcare. This is something that's been turned on its head, and I think rightfully so, everyone is probably scratching their head, and with good reason, because that usually goes to procurement process, where it's competitive, where everything is laid out, and all these questions are asked, asking about access and value that's got answered through a proposal. That's what we would do, and do course, that's what anyone else who wants to serve you would do as well, but that's not what Health Plan of San Joaquin is doing here, so I think that's why they're confused. We would suggest that all these questions can be answered through the procurement process that's scheduled to come up. Health Plan of San Joaquin and other local missions have historically not participated, but I think times have changed so much, and the stakes are so high that there really is no reason that they could not be asked to submit a proposal so that everything can be analyzed. I think we heard a lot of the why of this conversation, but much of it is historical. The auditor report is based on information from 17 and earlier, published in 19. We have been deeply committed to improving everything, and the county, Miss Ramon County, can spend, but I think as in any problem that's being solved, when you're looking at the potential solution, the question is how? Is this solving problems? And I still haven't heard an answer to that. We know the challenges are access, we know the need for governance and then resources, and haven't seen how taking this path down the LOI path, any of those problems in a way that can't be solved through the normal process. So I just reiterate that we're committed to your county, we want to stay here, want to continue to partner, hope to submit a proposal through the procurement process, and of course, stay engaged in the resource queue as we continue to evaluate our options. So thank you.
Yeah, if I could, thank you for that feedback, and if I could just respond to the LOI and the RFP. So I've been talking with our state representative, and I've asked those questions, and I said, why are the local initiatives not submitting RFPs? And right, wrong, or indifferent, that is the decision that the state has made, and they're not required to submit an RFP, they are required to submit a letter of intent. And although it's called a letter of intent, it's a package, and it's quite extensive, it's robust, it, all the financials, all the network planning, all their capacity. And so while it's not going through your typical RFP process, it is going through a process where it's being evaluated, it's being vetted, that was the words of the state, by the state, to determine if in fact it can support the request for expansion. So it's, you know, it's kind of apples and oranges. The state has said, commercial plans, you have to do an RFP, county-operated healthcare systems, you do letter of intents. And so with that, that's what the, that's how the state is measuring that. So I can't speak to why the state is not requiring everyone to go through the same process. All I know is that what the state has set forth as the guidelines for what is required, they are doing exactly what is being asked of them to do.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Then at this time.
Thank you very much. Board? Ms. Callaway? So our general direction is...
If I could just ask if the, if the supervisors could send me an email with your questions, and then I will address those questions back to everyone so that everyone is on the same page with the responses.
Are we okay for her outside the meeting sending us all the answers to the questions to every supervisor?
Yeah. No. No, we probably want to make it more...
I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
But, but, but I, with this, from what I'm understanding, we're going to forego the 20th, supervisors can continue to do their homework along with staff, and then we'll be bringing it back the 27th, and we'll be making a decision on which course we're wanting to take at that time. You know, just from my personal perspective is one, this LOI, you have options there. Depending on what you're hearing from different supervisors, the questions on course, I would prefer when it's agendized on the 27th to get, have those options as different things we can vote on at that time, not just, not just the letter of intent, so that we can make a sound decision and not just have one choice for a decision that's being agendized before us at that time. Is there any complaints from the rest of the board on that request?
I would just ask that they be part of the package, so we have time to look at them and ask any questions before we come in Tuesday.
Right. That's, that's perfect, Gary. Thank you for refining what I said. Any, any other comments? Ms. Callaway?
Ms. Edwards? I know I have some of the same questions that Supervisor Guaramendi does, so I send it to Laura, she responds to me, Jack sends it, she responds to Jack, and maybe Toffenelli's got a similar question, she responds. That seems like if we send a question and she responds, she can send it maybe to the board but not say what supervisor it came from? I mean, there has to be a way to simplify the process for Ms. Larson.
So I'm, yeah, as we all know, unfortunately, the Brown Act doesn't care so much about inefficiencies. That said, I am, I am more than happy to have a conversation with Ms. Larson, and we can talk about how it might be approached in as least painful a manner as possible for everybody.
I appreciate that.
Of course.
At least painful for her and still help all of us without her having to respond because some of the questions we all might be interested in.
Sure.
Thank you.
We will figure out a way to synthesize all of the questions with all of the answers so that it is shared across everyone. We'll figure that out.
Thank you for the presentation. I think we're pretty clear on our direction for now. Look forward to seeing you on the 27th once, once again.
Thank you for your patience and consideration.
Conduct a public hearing, approve the third addendum to the Medical Cannabis Cultivation and Commerce Ordinance Environmental Impact Report, adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 17.95 of the Calvares County Code relating to cannabis cultivation and commerce, adding a sunset date for submittal of cultivation applications, and adding well testing in the seventh year of cultivation, and authorize publication of summary ordinance. testing in the seventh year of cultivation, and authorize publication of summary ordinance.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. Greg Wayland, again, Director of the Division of Cannabis Control, standing in for Mr. Mallor this morning. The item before you is a proposed amendment to Chapter 1795, brought before you pursuant to your direction on March 9, 2021, and includes an amendment to the sequel addendum or introduces for adoption a proposed third amended sequel addendum. The changes are somewhat narrow in scope, addressed to two provisions of the county code, Chapter 1795050D and 1795090EE, and in general, would create a sunset date on rights to apply that are not utilized in a complete application on or before October 22, 2024, and adds a well test requirement in the seventh year after permit issuance to the county code. The matter was brought before the Planning Commission on March 25, 2021, and is back before the board today for adoption, consistent also with the settlement agreement entered in Kraken versus County of Calaveras, case number 19CV4446. So with the Planning Commission's recommendation for adoption and staff's recommendation for adoption, we recommend that the board take the following action today: to approve the third addendum to the Medical Cannabis Cultivation and Commerce Ordinance Environmental Impact Report as presented in the addendum attached to this item, adopt the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 1795 as outlined in the staff report and also in the proposed ordinance accompanying this item as well, and authorize summary publication of the adopted ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Wayland. Any board comments or questions? Seeing none, I will go to public comment?
I'm so sorry, Chair. And I may have just missed it, but did we open the public hearing?
Oh, my apologies. I'm opening the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. I don't know what I'd do without staff. Public comment?
I do not see any at this time.
Thank you. Any further deliberation by the board? Mr. Garamendi?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I understand why we're doing this. I have to admit that I think that adding the seventh year for the well test is a bit capricious, and I just, I don't think it's necessary. I think we're just adding more regulation to business just because. So if there was any interest in changing what's before us, I would drop that. But if there's no interest, this isn't the hill I'm going to die on.
Okay. Thank you. Any other further board comments? Ms. Bolendorf?
I would agree with Jack. Anything comment?
Thank you. If there's no, if there's no further comments or deliberation, I will close the public meeting and entertain a motion. Is that correct, Ms. Edwards?
Yes, close the public hearing and then entertain a motion.
Here we are.
I reluctantly make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board? Thank you. That was painful. That's the final item, so we'll move on to supervisor announcements. I'll let, Ms. Callaway, your lights on.
Considering we've had an extreme drop in public invite, and I asked if we could maybe invite the public, and didn't hear anything, some just bring it up. We have Xs and Os in another room in the lobby. If at least when we go into orange, we could start inviting the public back.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Definitely a moment of consideration for that. Mr. Garamendi?
Thank you very much, and to Ms. Callaway, I would agree. It would be great to, I never thought it says, but it'd be great to get the public back in here participating in what we're doing. But we have, as many of you on this board know, that at the beginning of the pandemic, Railroad Flat Elementary, which had been around for 125 years, was shut down pretty suddenly. It was anticipated that we were going to, the school district was going to take on shutting that school down at the end of this academic year. But when pandemic sat, the school board made a snap decision and closed it immediately. For those, I know everybody in this room is familiar with railroad and the challenges that are faced there. When the school district closed, it's a big vacant hole in the middle of the community. This is our least advantaged community in a very under-advantaged county. The county, the community wants to take that old school site and turn it into a community center. There's a tremendous, while there may not be a lot of resources in railroad, there's a lot of community energy around this. They would like to turn it into a rec center with the gym. They want to have outreach activities for both tribal members and people who need social services. It's got a community garden attached to it. There are computer classes that are currently being taught and accessed to the internet there. It is a really important piece of Railroad Flat. Deputy Sheriff's Association is offering to help volunteer to keep things going. We've talked to the sheriff. We know that if this center of the community disappears or goes vacant, it's going to leave a big hole emotionally in the community, but also present a threat to the community. The nature of horrors of vacuum, and so do criminals. And we don't want them moving in and this becoming a burden on law enforcement and the community. The school district has, Calaveras Unified has decided, or excuse me, had formed a committee to decide what to do with their property, same way they did a number of years ago, and I think you guys were on the board, with Mountain Ranch Community, with Mountain Ranch School. The school district will be taking up shortly the disposal of the property. The community wants to keep it as a community center. As such, we've, the community and myself have been working with Parks and Rec Department to look at Prop 68 funds on how we may be able to bring the community together with the resource center, community center, and then parks money and turn it into something that's been very successful in Mountain Ranch. When they closed their school, it became a youth center, a place for the community to meet. There's even more opportunities in railroad with that gymnasium for a commercial kitchen so people can have industry, you know, youth wrestling program. Those of you who are familiar with railroad and upcountry, wrestling is a really big sport, is throughout the county, but it's really important to these communities. And so I wanted to let this board know that these things are going on, that I'm actively involved in them, and that these things will be coming to the board over the course of the next several months. The first step is going to be, I will ask this board if you will allow the community to begin negotiating with the school district on acquiring this because it would have to come in under Parks and Rec, so it would be a county asset. These are all things that are coming down the pipe, and I just want to give everybody a heads up so that, you know, we can begin conversations as these come forward. But this is a really big deal for Railroad Flat. This is, I don't want to be too dramatic and say it's a life or death thing for the community, but it's at that level. We could step up and fill the gap for this community, or it will wither and become a problem. So I just wanted to let you all know that that's happening and that I look forward to future conversations and opinions and find a way to work through this together as a board. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Keep up the good work, Mr. Garamendi. We appreciate it. Any further board comments? Mr. Toffenelli? Ms. Bolendorf?
No, just, we attended a call last week, and as everyone already knows from the previous agenda item, working with Mia to lobby for the wagon trail. So thank you, everyone, for today supporting the letter to allow Mia to keep doing the work that she's doing.
Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli?
I do have something to report. Tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, we have a very important Mountain Valley MS meeting scheduled that it will be held in Angel's Camp at the Fire Department where city council usually meets. It's very important. We report next Tuesday on the outcome of that meeting.
Thank you. I would like to report that our Fish and Game Commission has moved forward with a 22nd Annual Kids Fishing Clinic, Saturday, May 1, 2021, Murphy's Community Park, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, first through eighth graders. Fishing gear provided or bring your own. All children must be accompanied by an adult. Sponsored by the Calaveras County Fish and Game Commission and California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We have, the state's brought forward quite a bit. They're going to stock the creek. We've invested into stocking the creek. It's going to be another good, successful day. It's been a couple years since we had one. Great fun, good people, and the kids. I mean, if you can't catch a fish during that moment, I'm sure there'll be someone there to help you out and make sure that they're successful. It'll be a good time. So if you have a child between, or it's not just first through eighth grade, it's younger than first grade, kindergartners, preschoolers, two-year-olds are all welcome, you know. And everyone, please, you know, just be mindful of your neighbors while you're there and practice anything in the safest manner for the health of everyone while you're there.
Are you going to serve hot dogs?
Yes, I am. And I'm going to, I'm going to be all gloved and everything up, Ms. Callaway. I got a full process to go forward to do it in the best and healthiest way.
Are you going to get 10-minute head start on the kids for fishing?
I'm cooking hot dogs.
I'm cooking hot dogs?
Yeah. All right. Any further board announcements? If not, thank you, and we'll see you next Tuesday.